If I could have everyone's attention, we will start in about one minute. We do have, I think, one more person asking for a request for a comment card. So we have eight people this evening. That's beyond what we can usually accommodate, but we will ask for, ultimately, we'll ask for a motion to suspend the rules. But I will hold everybody to three minutes, just so that we can move forward expeditiously. Thank you. I would like to go ahead and call the meeting of the Bloomington City Council to order. Would everyone stand for a pledge of allegiance and a moment of silence? Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Alderman Lauer.
Here.
Alderman Sage.
Here.
Alderman Milla Womway.
Here.
Alderman Stern.
Here.
Alderman Painter.
Here.
Alderman Schmidt.
Here.
Alderman Black.
Here.
Alderman Howland.
Here.
Alderman Fruen.
Here.
Mayor Renner.
Here. Thank you very much. I would, we do, as I mentioned earlier, have actually more than the number of people. We have devoted 15 minutes for our typical public comment in our ordinance, up to three minutes a person, but I don't want to turn people away. We have a total of eight this evening. And just to clarify, there are a variety of ways that if you want to contact the council and discuss things that are very helpful, probably the most important, frankly, I think, is mayoral open houses, and you can come every Friday before a Monday city council meeting. If you want to get answers, if you want to have some intelligent public dialogue and discuss issues and ideas with people, that's probably the best place to do it. We don't routinely, unless there's something really unusual, respond no matter what citizens say in terms of public comment. So that being said, do I have, could I have a motion to suspend the rules, to allow us to give essentially a three minutes per person, up to 24 minutes, because we have eight people?
I'll make that motion, Mayor.
Moved by Alderwoman Schmidt, second by Alderwoman Sterns. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll? Oh, actually, we can do it this way, sorry. We're out of township mode. If everyone would vote. Okay. Should be now. Okay. Motion carries nine to zero. There are no nays to announce, Madam Clerk. Thank you. And, excuse me. All right, there it goes. The first, and the clerk mixies up for me here, Dale Nafzinger, if you'd come forward. And again, I would ask everyone to respect the three minutes. Thank you.
Dale Nafzinger, 1610 South Main, Bloomington. I've lived in the city my entire life, Bloomington or Normal. When I was a kid, taxes were half percent for the state income tax. Now they're at 5.67. Sales taxes, two or four percent. Property taxes were way down the list. Back then, we paid our bills. Everywhere I turned, there's a new tax, new entertainment tax, sales taxes are up, taxes, 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 and yet we can't pay our bills. And I was at the meeting the other day, and all I heard was how far in debt we are, and how big the bills are, and how much more massive they're going to get. And one of the main parts centers on pensions. And I know we can't fix pensions today, but we need a serious talk about it. I have family members, so I have to be careful what I say, and I'm not mad at city employees. They're good people, you people. They're all good people, but we've got to take a serious look. There's a lot of things we've talked about, but we just need to get serious about it. The city is here to take care of us, and it's been turned around. We're taking care of the city now. We just keep voting for more and more and more. And I don't want to fire anybody, I don't want to cut anybody's pay, but we've got to start making some cuts. In 2009, my business went terribly. We had to make big cuts, we lost people. We turned it around, and we're doing better now. Had to. If I hadn't made changes, I wouldn't be able to be here today. Well, the city's going to have to do something different. You're going to have to. It's going to be painful. Everybody says, no, cut somebody else's stuff. Whatever. We've got to talk about cuts. At that meeting, all I heard from almost everyone is cut something, look at it harder, do small things. But everyone said, there's things we need and things we want, and we've got to do the needs first. And there's your extra minute. Thank you.
Thank you, Dale. Let's see, fist bump. Could you, for the record, state your actual name?
Actual name? Okay. Actual name's Josh Schmidt-Gahl.
Okay, thanks.
Sorry about that.
No, all right.
How are you guys doing? Hi there, everybody. Fist bump here from the morning show on Cities 92.9 with Ian Bane. Today is bubble wrap appreciation day, and sure, I was wearing bubble wrap this morning, but tonight I'm a different guy. Here's a fist bump change-up. A city that runs a projected deficit, then a projected surplus, then a projected deficit, a city that raises taxes on amusement, gas, utilities, property, a city that subcontracts counseling and still pays themselves for the counseling they aren't doing, or consulting they aren't doing, excuse me, a city that hires people in Kansas City, Chicago, and New York and thinks that they're representing us. This is what I see, and the state of Bloomington is weak. Mr. Mayor and the council, we are lost, and it's obvious that you are not capable of finding the way. This is obvious. Thank you. Okay, Sue Felkamp.
I'm going to laugh at my page. Good evening. My name is Sue Felkamp. I'm in the city of Bloomington, Ward 1. I wanted to thank Mayor Renner for inviting me to be a part of the citizen summit last week. I found it to be very interesting, and I walked away from it with a good feeling of positivity for the city. And it also got me thinking about feasibility studies and why we spend hundreds of thousands of dollars on them for actions that aren't always taken when we can be using the time with our citizens. It's our money, it's our tax-paying fees that pay for it. I think the citizens should have more summits, and we should make the decisions for the cities. The biggest complaints I know on the survey online was for high taxes and is also for the bad roads. I know we've got, you know, 86 miles plus of bad infrastructure that needs to be fixed before we can do the pavement. My thoughts are, we can save lots of money by not spending it on feasibility studies and letting people make the choices and spend the money in Bloomington for the people of Bloomington. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, council. Nice to see you all again. I'm back. In September of last year, I authored, through a lot of research, a lot of cutting and pasting, a lot of discussions with other council members in other cities, other city managers in other cities, and I submitted a formal request to have the Open Government Data Ordinance presentation be made by myself to the Committee of the Whole, where I think that's a proper location instead of the council. Since that time, I have gotten zero feedback on being on the agenda. I brought this up to the city manager this evening and some of you in the council. Clearly, I will be resending that email with the attached ordinance. Yes, Mayor Renner, I am about the minutia, something you had chastised me for in emails. Yes, city manager hails, I want to see the detailed line-by-line aspect of the budget made available to the public as soon as February 23rd, when you publish it. You have had a year to think about it, you've had a year to staff to work on it. It should be the minutia that you do not want us to see, obviously, needs to be made available. That's why I authored the Open Data Ordinance, so we can move forward, so we don't make incremental changes in website transparency, which I proposed long before the mayor was in office. It takes a majority of you to put something on the agenda, or the mayor or city manager gets to put it on also. I seem that the minority of you, as councilmen and legislators, have lost your voice. If you wanted to propose something, you have to get the majority to agree with you before there's even a vote in public. I don't find that democratic at all. I think we may need to move to a request form that citizens can fill out, that you as councilpeople can fill out, it be available and seen on the website of topics that you want to put on there. Oh, I'm sorry, citizen engagement. It's not just about getting an award and being proud of a single award. We need a new process for items to put on the agenda. There's things that came up tonight, it's clear that you don't have that process. Please engage yourselves in doing that as soon as possible. Thank you.
Okay.
My name is Alton Franklin. I live at 508 Patterson Drive here in Bloomington, Illinois. A lot of things going through my head lately. It seems like there's a lot of listening going on and not a whole lot of hearing. And the things that do happen seem to be more geared towards eye candy, window dressing. Yes, we had the citizens come over and they gave us all these great ideas. Great ideas, just exactly that. It's absolutely fascinating and wonderful, but it means absolutely squat until you do something. I've been saying this for a long time, I'm going to keep on saying it, I'm not going away, folks. I will not live in a Potemkin village. For those of you who don't know, there was a Russian minister by the name of Potemkin who kept Catherine the Great in the dark, basically, by telling her stories about how great things were, and in advance of her driving through the countryside to see how wonderful things were, he would go out, put clothes on the peasants, dress up their facades, make the places look really nice so that as she drove through, she saw all these clean and wonderfully dressed and really nice folks, and everything was just ducky. And as soon as she drove past, they were yanking back the clothes, which closely approximates the way that taxes are approaching here. You know, if I hear the word revenue one more time, I think I'm going to puke. It's not revenue, folks, it's taxes. It's your constituents' money. It comes out of our pockets. Yeah, $7 a year. You know what? That's close to three gallons of milk for those folks that don't make that much. I remember those times. I was enlisted military with a wife and son. I know what it means to live hand-to-mouth. You know what? As a Marine, I also know the value of action. I know what it means to be the tip of the spear. You have to get off your butt. You have to start doing something and doing something right. And it doesn't mean spending more money, folks. Here's a clue: when you reach the bottom of the purse, stop spending. Go out and do something to cut back. Start making some sense. Stop doing what you're doing. That's the definition of insanity, doing things the same way expecting different results. And that's really all I can see. All I see is how we're being listened to. I see no action being taken. I see no real consideration being given to your constituents. I hope and I pray that in this next election, that the citizens are going to realize that what we got ain't been working, and we get something in there that does. Thank you.
Hard to top that one. I also attended the summit meeting last week. I thought a lot of good things came out of that. Part of the material that was made available to us was the survey that we had roughly 600 people respond to. I'm sure most, if not all, all of you have already done so, but for any who haven't, please go out, read the results of that survey, including the comments, because that's where a lot of the meat is. We're getting into budget season. Over the last few months, we've heard a lot of references to something called priority-based This was page nine of the 90-page handout from the survey showing the results of, get my spectacles down, the priority rankings of the six broad strategic goals. And guess what? Safety and security was number one, fire and police. Enduring, sound, infrastructure was number two. At the bottom of the list, far behind the leaders, was a revitalized, thriving downtown and distinctively Bloomington, parks, libraries, other things along those lines. Please keep that in mind as you're going through the budget cycle. Also included in the handouts was something that Patty Lynn provided last October, and on this, it showed that the only spending on roads is going to be the additional gas sales tax. This year, we spent zero out of our general fund for street improvement. That's all borrowed money to cover what I consider to be an operating expense. When we start borrowing money to pay operating expenses, we're on a road for disaster. Thank you.
Okay. Brexton Isaacs.
Good afternoon. My name is Brexton Isaacs. I am resident of Ward 4 in Bloomington. And I'm speaking today because I'd like to applaud the mayor for his response to the revelations of a racist remark made by a Bloomington police sergeant. These comments are unacceptable, and particularly coming from an on-duty, or someone from the on-duty police leadership. And Mayor Renner, your remarks of the MLK luncheon were on point, and I feel like we're the correct response. I believe that is our elected leadership's responsibility to unite our community, not divide it, which is why I'm so disappointed, unfortunately, in my Alderwoman Judy Sterns. Alderwoman Sterns, you went on 92.9 a little over a week ago and said, quote, "Not in our town. Is that changing hearts and minds, or is that just window dressing? Is that feel-good, let's be better than everyone else?" I think that's what this is, end quote. I find these remarks distasteful, and I think that we deserve better from our community leaders. Not in our town is a volunteer-based grassroots community organization that's trying to fight hate in Bloomington Normal, and for our community leaders to mock their work is divisive and unnecessary. We should be supporting their efforts and not tearing them down. You should be better than that, and our city deserves better than that, which is why I felt compelled to be up here and hold you accountable for those remarks. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Hi.
Good evening.
Members of the council and hopefully the legal department in Bloomington, the city of Bloomington. I've lived in Bloomington for 14 years, and I started Neighborhood Watch in Tipton Trails, so I've had a little bit of experience in Bloomington, and I've had a lot of volunteer work. I'm here to talk about business in Bloomington, however, and I own a business. I only just heard the phrase, "Business is war," however. Most recently, in the war then, without cause, Morton Community Bank went into, no, broke into my safe deposit box at their Jackson Street home office location. I was in surgery, under anesthesia and at the hospital, when they broke in. I didn't owe them any money, and I had rented the safe box for a year. What an abuse of trust and a violation of me and my company. By the way, it's Sweeteds USA. Violated and bullied. Morton Community Bank must not be granted banking operations in Bloomington. No people should have to go through what I've gone through. They started a war after my company. Why would a bank with 35 locations be so interested in my safe deposit box? Was the state's attorney too involved in Tazewell County? Is state's attorney Chambers here, going to fight for his fellow state's attorney and what they've done, or do the legal action? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Again, we don't respond unless perhaps in some extremely unusual situations. Ma'am, if you'll contact me afterwards, I can put you in touch with perhaps people who can help you. Unfortunately, it's not a specific matter with the city of Bloomington, but we will try to give you in touch with the right people, okay? Thank you. I want to move next to the, next item on is the State of the City address. I gave one a year ago. I know that most metro mayors give a State of the City speech, there's State of the Union at the national level, State of States, and then State of Cities. I think it's important to just briefly kind of take stock to where we are, the essentials, the good parts of our community. Obviously, as a mayor, I want to mention those things. We also know what we've accomplished over the last year and the obvious challenges that we have, you know, coming forward. And of course, as mayor, I'm going to say Bloomington, as I did last year, totally awesome. NerdWallace.com has ranked us as one of the top 10 growth economies in the United States. CNN Money has said we're one of the best small metropolitan areas to live. Other designations we've had for working retirement, one of the best 10 metropolitan areas for working retirement, and for singles. So it seems like we've managed to have advantages that attract people at both ends of the light cycle for livability. We're still the fastest-growing economy in downstate Illinois, and of course, we do have the best-trained workforce, the highest education level, lowest crime rate in all of Illinois, and our strategic location. We're the only one of the five metropolitan areas in central Illinois, that's one in an hour of all the others, and within two hours of Chicago. And other core community assets that we have that are en v. many cities, obviously a solid employment base with State Farm, Country Financial, Mitsubishi, ISU, obviously, and others. We've got several colleges and universities with national reputations, and a strong regional airport. We've got Amtrak service and high-speed rail on the way, exemplary public schools, sports teams, very low commuting times, and other great amenities such as Constitution Trail, a vibrant zoo, thriving community artists in downtown, downtown in the process of revitalization, and multiple entertainment venues that are both public and private. So as far as our core assets, I'm have to report that Bloomington is a truly wonderful city and in an awesome community. But obviously, we've had our challenges, and we still have them. We've made some, I think, great progress over the last year, and we still have challenges and continue to make the progress in the future. I want to thank all of the staff and the city council and others for helping, because obviously, this is a team effort as we move forward. It's been a year of progress, of openness, transparency, and transition. And certainly, we've got new personnel, but also new ideas and new energy. And I think that also that word seems to be on the street. We have had awards for transparency from the Illinois Policy Institute, for our pension funding policy statewide, and from the International City Management Association for our financial management. So there's certainly some very good things. Does that mean that we can't make improvements? No, of course, that's what we're always trying to do. We have had lots of challenges over this last year. We had budgetary problems that were larger than we thought for lots of reasons. We had Snowmageddon. We had the parking deck and the Colosseum and lots of bad contracts from previous administrations. Yes, we had lots of issues, but we got through them, and I think we showed how resilient we are. We've also had a recent incident that showed how a single bad event can begin to set back progress in rebuilding trust, and that's something that we're going to need to do as we move forward. However, just in highlighting a few of the things that we've done, I think in the areas of transparency, in the areas of culture change, our budget and economic development, we have made progress, but we have challenges for the future. Now, in terms of openness and transparency, I was just at the U.S. Conference of Mayors, and I'll just make a few comments about that when I deal with mayoral comments at the end of the evening. And virtually, nobody that I talk to can believe the kinds of things that we do. We have, nobody has a mayoral open house. Most people think I'm nuts to have one, right? But I think it's one of the most valuable things. We can sit and talk. If people have specific issues, we can get them resolved, and that's why I think it's one of the most important parts of public engagement. You can talk to your fellow citizens. It's even more valuable than when people come and talk to me in my office. And of course, I've also had that as an open door. We've had town hall meetings, we've had a citizen summit, we've had a citizen academy. There's nobody that I've spoke to at the U.S. Conference of Mayors who can even begin to touch that. Now, that doesn't mean that we can't even do more. We've had lots of progress. We've had a transparency ordinance, which helps codify many of our practices to ensure that we don't go back. And we've got lots of avenues, in other words, to listen to our constituents and to move forward. But it doesn't mean we don't have, obviously, tough decisions to make. We've also had term limits that went into effect about a year ago for boards and commissions, and that just means that after nine years, we ask people to take a year off. That has, I think, in some ways, removed some of the sense of entitlement that seemed to exist on many of our boards and commissions. And we've also got new blood to balance with experience, and so I think that that's been good. We have different people, have different backgrounds on our boards and commissions. I think we'll make better decisions as we move forward. Now, in terms of culture change, a related concept, this certainly can help improve the efficiency, effectiveness, responsiveness of our city services. This is something the council tacitly approved a year ago in November at our council retreat the city manager has moved forward with. We've made it clear that department heads are going to be evaluated, hired, et cetera, on the basis of their responsiveness to citizens, and that's really one of the core things. And we've had lots of new personnel at the department head level and below, and so certainly there's also seems to be some evidence of improvement in morale, although we've got a long way to go and a lot more progress there in terms of our legal services as part of culture change. The kinds of legal advice that we have certainly means that as we go forward, we're not going to be making the mistakes of the past, the kinds of contracts that we had that didn't protect the city for new development, for the Colosseum and other things. We're not going to make those mistakes. We also have a new procedure that's going into effect, hopefully, next month or the month after, with an administrative court for code violations. This will help us in many ways ensure effective code enforcement of dilapidated properties as we go forward. Now, so those are some of the things that I think are good things. We certainly want to continue to improve what we're doing in terms of our operations, but I think we've made tremendous strides. In terms of budgets, and we've talked, some of our people in public comment talked about that, but we've had actually more discussions about that, not just at citizen summit, but every time we have a mayoral open house. There are all kinds of concerns about that, and we've had lots of ideas thrown out on the table. But the main thing is, there aren't any free lunches. And I'd like to propose a free lunch. I'd like to say, you know, there's this thing called inflation, but it won't apply to us. It's going to affect everything else you pay for in the economy, but not Bloomington City Services. That's not true. It's like gravity in the real world, right? The physical world. Unfortunately, we do have that. Now, that doesn't mean that we can't do things to do more with less. We've been doing more with less for about six years. We've been doing more with less for about six years. Six years ago, we had about 100 more full-time equivalent employees than we have today. We're at about 650, we were at about 750. So we can certainly do more with less. It's harder and harder when you've got a more lean force, you know, workforce than you've had in the past. So we're also, where the tire hits the pavement in the system of federalism. And that is, local governments have to make stuff happen. Actually, when I was at the US Conference of Mayors, many of the mayors used a different S-word. But we, we do have to make things happen. And mayors are clear, you know, we don't have anybody else to dump on. We don't have anybody to give grants to, to handle our problems, any unfunded mandates. We have to do it. So it's basically us. We have to make things happen. And so at the local level, you do know what you're getting. You know what you're paying for. At the state level, the federal level, maybe not always so much. Here, we give police protection, emergency 911, fire, parks and recreation, public works, and we give you water. It's pretty clear and not much else. Those are the core services. And obviously, we need also to promote economic development, but that's not a, always listed as a core function. So if you have some specific ideas for what you don't want, sometimes people give us those, but more often, what we tend to hear, and particularly on one of our local radio stations unfortunately, is platitudes. And platitudes does not help us solve problems. It's taking the cancer at the federal level and at the state level and trying to impose it here in Bloomington. And that's not appealing to the better part of humanity. That's the worst of our instincts. We need to make sure that we have specific things. Way, how do we solve a specific problem? If you've got great ideas, we want to hear them. Because we will make better decisions if we have more creative ideas. But if we hear platitudes, the kinds of stuff you hear in Washington, I was in Washington last week and again, the mayors were joking. We can't be the filibustering, you know, blithering numbskulls like we see in Washington or our state capitals. Because if we start filibustering, we're going to have to clean up the mess that happens while we're filibustering. So at, at the point here is, there aren't any free lunches, there are tough choices, there are lots of reasons I'm happy to explore. We do it almost every other week at the mayoral open house about what our financial situation is and why. There are no massive new programs that anybody is necessarily proposing. What we are trying to do, we're provide the core services that we provided to the city in the past. Now, in terms of, related to that, one of the ways that we can help our community, in addition to delivering core services, is to grow the local economy. And I would say that in addition to public safety, in addition to public works, that growing the local economy and economic development is a core city function. It's what cities have done since the formation of cities about 800 years ago, you know, during the time of medieval period, right? They also perform those kinds of core functions. And we have made some progress. We've made some progress in attracting business, but we've also lost some. One of the things that we've, that are, that it's a clear national trend is that malls, strip malls, to a lesser degree, some degree strip malls, but malls are having problems. We're seeing that at our Eastland Mall. We're seeing that throughout the entire country. There were two panels at the US Conference of Mayors devoted in one way or another directly to dealing with that situation. One thing, where is the action? The action is, in the 21st century, downtowns and historic neighborhoods. Any chamber of commerce, pretty much anywhere, any developer, investors, whether or not they're, they're city planners or people who are investors, city managers, mayors, they, they know that there is a new inversion, especially outside the Sun Belt. People aren't moving out to the distant suburbs anymore. In many cases, they're not even buying homes. They want to go back to downtowns and older neighborhoods. So if we don't revitalize our downtown, Bloomington is not going to be able to grow economically in the next generation if, as, as we would if we do revitalize our downtown. It is critical. Now, does that mean that we need to spend the kind of money that normal spent in the uptown? No. We've got frankly, many more assets. The one asset we don't have is a university of 20,000 students hanging out right next to our downtown. But other than that, we've got a lot of core assets. We just need to try to leverage those. And we've had a fair amount of success. Certainly with respect to the downtown bar scene, there's not a lot that we can all do, but we certainly did the council, and I want to applaud the council for spending time and effort and revitalizing, clarifying our liquor ordinances. That has helped. It's also helped that I, as liquor commissioner, was not, didn't have a problem taking a sludge hammer to the teeth when people didn't perform or they didn't do what they were supposed to do. We have had over the last year, very few incidents in downtown Bloomington. In fact, the, the only real hearings that we've had over the last year have not been involving establishments in downtown. Now, some of that's because of a record fine that we had, some of it's because of aggressive enforcement, there are a lot of reasons, there's a lot of credit to go around, but we are beginning to stabilize, you know, the bar scene. We are also making progress. We have a downtown revitalization plan. If you don't have a plan, you're not going to get serious investment in your downtown. The downtown plan plus took us over a year to get money from the state of Illinois. It's not an impossible dream. For the Route 66 Visitor Center, it's on the old Route 66, that's going to be strategic, not just for downtown, but for providing an overall macroeconomic benefit to the entire community. People now go from Pontiac to Atlanta, Illinois. Pontiac, great place, I know Alderman Lauer likes it too. It is about the size of one of our wards. Atlanta, Illinois is about the one of, size of one of our 52 voting precincts. And they're kicking our butts in the Route 66 corridor traffic. Well, we're going to try to change that. Some of it's the museum, Chris Kuss and I are working with IDOT and others to make sure we have proper signage. And so we want to make sure that we grow our local economy and have a strategic hit for our downtown in particular. Related to that, we've got certainly some movement south of the library. The library doesn't either needs to expand, put a children's library in, et cetera. We've also had some additional interest in private sector and public entities coming in and joining us south of the library. That in the southeast corridor is a particularly exciting option, I believe, particularly since we could easily snake the bike trail through there to connect to the city hall downtown and other ways. So there'll, lots of, you know, balls in the air. One of the things, we've also had additional serious interest by investors in, since this was announced, our grant to the Route 66 Visitor Center, was, was investment in downtown and along the Route 66 corridor. One of those that I've talked about for, well, about a year on the campaign trail and every time as mayor, is having a hotel someplace adjacent to the Colosseum downtown for a variety of reasons. The addition of 150 or so rooms out of 7,000 in McLean County is comparatively minor. It's not that, it's the specific location, 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 location. It's having it right adjacent to the Colosseum. It will make sure the Colosseum is not an island. We'll get more gigs in the Colosseum. That will certainly help reduce its red ink and will be certainly a benefit to our community. If we get more gigs in the Colosseum, we're going to get, need more than 150 rooms across the street. So we'll have benefit to other hotels that'll have the spillover. So the possibility of all boats floating is clear and capital investment will attract capital investment. What we need to do is as much as possible to try to structure, and this is what we're still trying to work out, a deal so that a possible hotel would at least pay for itself or the debt service on something. That's what's really very difficult. The trust that was breached many times over from the Colosseum and frankly, during the previous city manager, we still have that burden to bear. So we're trying to make sure that we, if anything, under promise and overperform when it comes to some of these projects in downtown. But that is absolutely critical. That and our older neighborhoods are essential for the, the future of our city. So again, let's be clear that the, you know, the pathway for economic progress in the 21st century is not going to be malls and strip malls. We've got to, to make these investments. And so we're going to discuss more about this and economic policies for the future over the next year. And I'm hoping that we continue to make great progress, but I think we have a lot to build on over the past year. I think we've made progress working together and understanding each other. And I think that's an important component. Because if we work together, the possibilities of our progress for the future of our great city, I think are endless. Thank you very much. I want to move right along to a proclamation declaring February 2015 Therapeutic Recreation Month presented to Barb Wells, and I know she's in the audience, if you've come forward, Parks and Recreation Supervisor and Recreation and Cultural Arts.
Mayor Barb Wells is going to bring up Nicole Kohler.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I believe it is. SOAR Program Manager to help receive this proclamation from.
Okay, well, thank you. This is one of the fun parts of being mayor. Declaring again, February 2015 to be Therapeutic Recreation Month, whereas therapeutic recreation is a systematic process that utilizes recreation and other activity-based interventions based upon assessed needs of individuals with illness and/or disabling conditions to improve physical, cognitive, social, and emotional functioning in order to improve overall quality of life and, whereas to promote the benefits of therapeutic recreation services for people with disabilities, including increase independence, gain leisure activity skills, improve socialization, foster a healthy and active lifestyle, improve self-esteem, develop friendships, and become an active and engaging citizen of the community and, whereas the purpose of Therapeutic Recreation Month is to enhance the public awareness of therapeutic recreation programs and services, promote inclusive recreation opportunities for individuals with disabilities, and recognize, recognize professionals providing these services, including Certified Therapeutic Recreation Specialists, CTRS, and, whereas an increase in community awareness is necessary to promote healthy recreation options for people with disabilities. Now, therefore, I, Terry Renner, Mayor of the city of Bloomington, do hereby proclaim February 2015 as Therapeutic Recreation Month. I encourage all Americans to recognize Therapeutic Recreation Month and promote the value of service to people with disabilities in our community. Thank you. Keep coming forward. Next, we have a presentation by Connect Transit Head Andrew Johnson. And we've got approximately five minutes allocated for presentation and about a five-minute Q and A. Obviously, I'm not going to be turbid or crony about that, but we, we do have some limits, Andrew. Thanks.
I'll get us done on time. I appreciate the opportunity to be before you once again. It has been another great year for Connect Transit. Our efforts and investments in community outreach and technology is paying off with ridership increasing 25% in fiscal year 2014 and over 40% in the last three years. When I started here in 2011, the transit system had just finished its fiscal year and had reported providing a little over 1.8 million trips. Fast forward to 2014, we provided almost 2.6 million trips and we are on track to hit 3 million in, or nearly 3 million in 2015. We're also moving towards being able to provide better amenities to our customers with the completion of a bus stop and shelter survey and study. We will now be conducting community outreach as we finalize our plans to move from a flag stop system that we currently have to a system of fixed stops, which will be more accessible, more safer for the constituents, and also more reliable. We are holding open houses in the month of January to gather valuable community input. In fact, we will be having one on the 29th in this facility right here and would invite all of you to attend if you have some time. It'll be between 4:30 and 6:00 PM. We are very excited to show people what these new stops and shelters are going to look like, where they're going to be, and gather all the, the discussion and, and input that we can on it. Connect is also leading a multi-state joint procurement for buses. We will be receiving up to 30 new buses over the next five years, but this is part of a larger 360 bus purchase. While we will only be receiving a small portion of those buses, it speaks to the nationwide leadership role that Connect Transit has taken in this industry, being trusted and relied upon to lead a procurement for 28 agencies in seven different states. Our payoff for this is, we are going to be getting much better pricing and faster delivery times than would have been, would have been achieved if we had just done this on our own. Paying for those buses is going to be much easier as well because Connect Transit was recently awarded an ultra-competitive Federal Ladders of Opportunity Grant for over $2 million. There were billions of dollars in requests nationwide for this program. It was a $100 million program and we were able to secure over 2% of that total pot. And hopefully, you've seen the Connect Transit buses moving around town now with advertising on them. Our buses are now making us money. We're now selling ads not only on the sides and rear of the buses, but we're also wrapping our very first bus and that is moving around town as well. It's a great way for advertisers to get their message out and it provides much-needed local revenue to our system. In addition to our community outreach, we've also been successful in reaching out to our elected officials, including yourselves. We have taken bus rides with most of our local and state officials and we even had a member of Congress come visit us recently. We will continue our political outreach and tell our story of just how important public transportation is in our community. And as we move into the new year, there are many more exciting projects coming up. As I discussed earlier, we are going to be talking about shelters and bus stops and as soon as the ground thaws, we will be installing those bus stops. We should also, should be receiving our new buses in, in the summer. That will be a first order of five to 10 brand-new buses, new ultra-modern low floor with the latest in clean diesel technology. We are also committed to continuing to build new transfer points in Bloomington and also in Normal. We are targeting Front Street as the first place where we want to make infrastructure improvements that will hopefully lead to further development around it as well. Currently, we're searching for the funding to complete the entire goal, but we are going to be moving forward regardless with design this year. Connect will also commence a comprehensive operational analysis of the transit system in the spring. There has not been one of these done for the transit system in well over a decade. It is high time that we do a, what's called a COA. It will be performed by a consultant and it will review what our system is doing well, what we can do better, and it will help us create the roadmap to achieving a better service, including more efficient and effective routing, more frequency, greater span of service, and maybe even seven-day-a-week service. Making that roadmap a reality though will require more innovative funding. Connect Transit is grateful for the generous local capital received from the city and it has enabled us to make great strides in improving the quality of public transportation in our community. But it is no secret that Connect Transit operates in an uncertain funding environment. It has been years since the federal government has passed a long-term surface transportation bill and recent discussions with congressional staffers have not inspired confidence, as it were, that the situation will change anytime soon. The state of Illinois continues to have financial difficulties as the uncertainty associated with an imminent administration change. The governor is in place, but nobody knows exactly who's going to be staffing the department, so we're still in, holding, hold our breath mode for that. These two entities, federal and state government, make up 85% of Connect Transit's funding for operations. Now, local funding is going to be the key to the future success of public transportation in our community. The ridership growth has shown that the demand for more public transportation is definitely there. The public input we have received reinforces that. We are working diligently to find all available sources of locally generated non-tax revenue to better leverage the public operating funds that we do receive. And we will continue discussions with community leaders to determine realistic pathways to the growth of public transportation in Bloomington-Normal. And I thank you for your time.
Questions, a few minutes here for questions. Jim?
Andrew, just a quick question, maybe a short answer. If you take a snapshot of your budget today, are you happy with where you stand right now? Are you struggling? Are you ahead of the game? There's a lot of fluctuations during the year, gasoline prices, I don't know about diesel prices, but just what, what's the current state of the budget for you guys?
State of the budget is good. We're, we're just right on target. We're a little bit under where we should be. We're six months through our fiscal year. We have hedged most of our diesel purchasing, so we have it locked in. I don't think anybody was expecting the big drop that we've had recently, but we're still locked in at a very low rate. So we have managed about as much risk as we can and at the moment, in, in a status quo world, we're, we're doing fine. But looking ahead, and we always need to look ahead because making big changes in the transit system takes a while, we're looking at a bit more uncertainty and definitely taking a look at our options.
Alderman said.
Just a quick comment and to say something that, that I think I've said before, Andrew, and that is, thanks for your results. I know when you were hired, I recall some of the accomplishments and results that you had delivered in your previous position and you clearly have brought that expertise and, and delivered comparable results or, or better results here. And it's reflected in the, you know, what I like to think of as some of those performance in. And it's reflected in the, you know, what I like to think of as some of those performance indicators that you've touched on, like ridership and so forth. And so you really are running really an entity like a business. And I think that that's, you know, worthy of acknowledgement. So again, thanks for your results.
I appreciate that. And it's also a testament to our very supportive board and also our very talented staff that backs me up. I'm the one who is the face of this and make the decisions in many cases, but I have a great team with me too.
Alman Lauer?
Yeah. Have you looked at all at preemptive signaling in terms of efficiency and trying to help your entity create that efficiency through the traffic? I know that certain times it's not a big deal, but at times, even in our small city, there are times when we could be a little bit more efficient. I have been looking at City of Champaign, their Connect Transit or their public transportation system, coupled with public safety, namely the fire department, researched and acquired a pretty good-sized grant, working with GPS and GIS, to acquire and install and are currently operating. Have you looked at anything like that? Have you?
We've definitely been taking a look at that. We've had, over the last couple of years, some informal discussions with emergency services as well. Expect that to be something that is looked at very, in a very detailed way in our comprehensive operational analysis. We would be excited about putting something like that in place.
I'd love to talk to you further about that. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. Thank you, Andrew. Thanks for all you do. What did you? Oh. Go ahead. Do you want to go ahead? I'm sorry.
That's okay. I got it in the last second. But I just wanted to thank you for the presentation. And, you know, when we went on our bus ride, it was a very interesting experience because I never had been on the bus before. And it was during the time when I didn't have a car, and I appreciated, number one, the kind of the education I had to go through to learn more about it. But additionally, I appreciate the many efficiencies that you put into place. So I'm reminded of the iPads that the drivers would use to kind of have the GPS as opposed to putting in a separate system. So you have everybody kind of connected up, and then there's an app you can use to track where the buses are at. And I know that, you know, my ward is, I constantly hear people asking me for more bus stops, better accessibility to various things. And I know your staff is working on that, and, you know, it's been a pleasure working with you guys thus far. I do it in my political realm and then also my professional realm at AFSN because we're trying to get some fixed stops over there with our employees. So it's been, it's been great, and I look forward to more successful years.
Appreciate your comments.
Thanks. And we, just a, we did go, Chris Coos and I rode with him, and they had the app. We were, we had dinner downtown or lunch downtown, and then they noted, okay, we need to be out of here in six and a half minutes. So we were out, and it was there, six and a half minutes. It told us, you know, GPS tracking when we need to be out there to catch the bus. So, and thank you for improved efficiencies in that, although I don't think I downloaded the app on my phone. But anyway, appreciate it.
You can fix that. But yeah, nights like tonight, it's a very nice tool to have.
Absolutely. As I was sliding all over trying to get here. Thank you. All right. We'll move on to Vazoo. Would you come forward? Our McLean County Regional Planning Commission Director. And we have a presentation that is 20 minutes and then about 10 minutes for Q and A. So Vazoo, turn it over 20 minutes.
Thank you. Mayor, Council, good evening. And I guess this is phase two of our comprehensive plan. I'll take about 15 minutes to kind of give an overview of the four-month outreach process and what we've heard and the community's vision, and maybe a few minutes to talk about the challenges in implementing that vision, and then we'll go into Q and A. I've presented this slide before, so I won't spend too much time, but we feel very good about the number of respondents for the outreach. We've heard from over 2,000 people, from diverse backgrounds, from different geographies. So we do feel very confident that the information that we've heard is representative of our overall community. The survey essentially contained four core questions. What is it that people valued in Bloomington and why? If they would change one thing in Bloomington today, which essentially was geared towards short-term improvements, to make it a better community, what would that be? And the third is, imagine in 20 years, all your hopes and dreams came true, what would Bloomington look like? We were trying to get to, get people to envision Bloomington in 20 years, and this question was essentially geared towards identifying people's vision for future. And fourth one is more, how do you expect us to get? So as we started receiving the responses, the responses were all open-ended, so we had to organize them in some fashion. So we've used tags to tag, actually code each response. So every response could potentially have anywhere from one to 10 or even more. And we, these tags were used to provide feedback during the outreach process to create some energy and enthusiasm in the community, which I believe they've definitely done a good job of that. But more importantly, what we've used these tags for is, at the end of this process, the report that you have in front of you, we've used these tags as a way to pull the related comments together to go over and reanalyze, to summarize the information with the help of Vision and Value Subcommittee from the City of Bloomington. This process, definitely with over 2,000 responses, four open-ended questions, we were looking at 8,000-plus individual responses. Definitely a lot of breadth and depth of information and experience that truly reflected the diverse backgrounds of the respondents. We are extremely pleased to see the positive energy that we have gained through, the positive energy and feedback through these surveys. What was very interesting is this reflected the way people truly feel about the community as a whole, not in pieces. They're not just talking about safety. They're not just talking about parks. They're talking about all of these together. Some of the disadvantages, I guess, are cons. The process was very time-consuming to interpret the results, and it was very hard to quantify. Responses sometimes were very vague or deviated from the question at hand. Regardless of the variation in responses, there were some really strong core values. And on pages eight and nine of the report that was submitted to the council, these were organized into seven core values. These core values will be forming the basis for the vision of the plan and the subsequent planning itself. They're organized into these seven core values here. I'll start going through one at a time, but if you have questions about anything else, we can jump back and forth. One of the very important things from the get-go is people really like the size of the city. People think it's not too big, not too small. So very frequently, this phrase was used, "small-town feel with big-city amenities." And they were talking about family friendliness, the sense of community. And many times, people said it's very quiet and peaceful, and it's very safe. Though the one exception I have to say from a safety perspective is respondents from the wards six and seven felt they were more unsafe than safe. But overall, the number of respondents that said they were safe, they felt safe was more. The rich history associated with the community, and again, people say perfect size. And all the big-city amenities that were associated with Bloomington, job opportunities, educational choices, particularly public schools, lots of great positive feedback about the educational choices that we have here. Entertainment options, shopping, dining, definitely, we've heard so much about dining, and as one of the newest residents to Bloomington, I can vouch that we are still, we still didn't go through all the dining options we have here. Arts and cultural opportunities. People highly regard, highly regard the arts and cultural opportunities we have here. They feel like that's enhancing the overall quality of life. Stable economy. Many people talked about Bloomington as a recession-resistant community. And just when, when the survey went out, we've, we've seen some news articles where one of our local major employers was moving some jobs out. We thought there would be this wave of responses that really had this panic about jobs. But overall, most people really felt comfortable with the amount of good-paying jobs that we have in this community. Recession-resistant community was used quite frequently in describing Bloomington. Highly educated and white-collar workforce. And going forward, what people envision is diversified economic base. And this is particularly, people start talking about, you know, small and local businesses. They think we have to place more emphasis on expanding in this arena. And given that we have quite a bit of, a number of high education institutions, both community colleges and universities, they, we did hear quite a bit about creating a culture of entrepreneurship moving forward and zooming us into 21st century economy. Again, we touched upon this in our first bullet item here. But overall, the quality of public schools, both District 87 and Bloomington, and Unit 5, was cited quite frequently as to why people love Bloomington. And they keep calling Bloomington as family-friendly community. Many of them refer to the educational choices here. Higher education institutions, again, referring both to community colleges and universities. ISU, Westland, Heartland were the ones frequently referred to. These are the things that people would like, thank you, would like to see preserved moving forward. We did hear quite a bit about the funding changes at public school systems. And moving forward, that's one thing people want to make sure that our health of our public schools, the fiscal health of our public schools continued to be the way it is today. As it relates to opportunities for low-income youth, there was quite a bit of push on increasing educational opportunities for low-income youth. And many said this would help keep them out of trouble relating that to safety. Dynamic neighborhoods. People love what we have here today. Wide selection of neighborhoods, old and new. But there was a very specific emphasis on old neighborhoods. And I know Mayor Renner, a few minutes ago, you've pointed out that politicians and planners are talking about downtowns and older neighborhoods. But we are extremely pleased to see that that is, that's what the general public wants us emphasizing moving forward, which again is quite encouraging because as we know that as we move out into green fields, it's not only much more expensive, we are also leaving our past behind. Downtown as a mixed-use neighborhood with all its rich history, people love it. People love what we have today. But moving forward, they want to see much more of a vibrant downtown and surrounding historic neighborhoods. And they do see a strong link between the health of these two. Dissolving the east and west divide. This came up a lot. People do think that there is a divide that exists. And where that line is, we've heard comments from downtown through Veterans Parkway or somewhere in between. It's a, it's really a gray area, but the underlying, underlying sentiment definitely exists. People do believe that there is, there is a divide. And from a west-side perspective, we've heard quite a bit about the quality of schools to the infrastructure quality of schools to being food deserts and not having access to fresh, healthy food and the higher crime rate on the west. And from a historic preservation perspective, quite a bit of comments about the need and the urgency to preserve our historic neighborhoods. Moving forward, new neighborhoods, what should they look like? Most people talked about being a connected neighborhoods, not disconnected subdivisions, but much more connected neighborhoods, affordable and mixed-use neighborhoods. Infrastructure. I know today we talked quite a bit about infrastructure before this presentation. Existing parks and municipal services, people do like those. If you observe, one of the things that we have changed from envision to advocate for, there was a strong sense of urgency. People actually say, you know, fix it, fix it now, fix it today, you know, words like that. There is a strong sense of urgency. And there is definitely an emphasis on upkeep of our current assets than building new. Interestingly, most of this feedback on infrastructure was around transportation network. I think that's the more, most visible one. When somebody's Audi hits a pothole, I think that's definitely sends the message. But the underlying infrastructure is just as crumbling as our visible infrastructure. So moving forward in this plan, that's something that we definitely will have to take into account. And expansion of our infrastructure, definitely there is an emphasis on careful and thoughtful expansion and evaluation of ongoing costs and benefits. Throughout all the comments, a general underlying theme was health. More and more people are recognizing that the community providing healthy lifestyle options is very important to them. We've heard a lot about parks and trails. I think we did point this out in the report. Over 50% of all respondents talked about parks and trails. They love what we have. The only complaint is they want more of those. There is, there is definitely, excuse me, a heavy emphasis on local food. Farmers market is, you know, places like that, people do think that we need to foster. Farmers market actually fosters not just local food, but a culture of, you know, people getting together. They want to see more local restaurants serving local food. There is, people are very happy that we do have access to quality healthcare services, but most importantly, they're very excited about the quality of life that our parks and trails provide here in Bloomington. Moving forward, they definitely envision a safe and attractive walking and biking network. This is, I think, one exception to the rule where people said, just keep up with the maintenance of our existing infrastructure, exception being bike network. Most people don't feel like we have a complete and safe walking and biking network. So this is the area we've heard, build a safe network. So small footprint. From a planning perspective, I've heard several communities talk about preserving the farmland was one of the biggest drivers for keeping the footprint small. Majority of the comments that we heard through this process, they wanted the same size. People think that what we have today is a great size. They don't want us to expand too much. But the emphasis has been, the more we expand, the less multimodal we can be. And that's something that definitely is true, but I think compared to other communities, I think our emphasis is more on multimodal travel, being able to have the choice of using other modes of travel outside of cars. Last but not the least, people do want an efficient government. What they like today is a lot of municipal services. We heard quite a bit of appreciation about parks and rec department, the services and programs they provide, library, the cultural district. We've also heard a lot of positive feedback about Public Works' garbage and recycling program. They want those programs expanded. Moving forward, they do want efficient use of tax dollars and a unified vision from the elected leadership and transparency. So based on these core values, these core values So based on these core values, these core values is, they are going to be um we've throughout all the chapters presented in the book. Based on those, uh the community vision presented here has been um reviewed by the Comprehensive Plan Steering Committee and the Planning Commission. It is kind of lengthy, um uh as pointed out by one of our aldermen the other day, uh but I will read it out. In 2035, Bloomington will be a unique, cohesive, and vibrant community, successfully uniting and integrating its downtown core, established neighborhoods, and future developments. Supported by its high quality of life and enduring economic stability, Bloomington will be the destination for people and businesses that seek a culture of innovation and entrepreneurship. Its residents will continue to thrive, surrounded by rich history, arts and culture, lifelong learning opportunities, a healthy environment, and an active lifestyle. And um for the most part, Bloomington is really, um, we have a lot of those qualities today. In a bit, I will present to you some of the challenges that we do foresee for this uh plan process. So the information, obviously, it is eight thousand individual responses, a lot of depth um that reflects um people's individual comments. When we try to summarize such information, it it might be extremely hard to really get the passion behind those comments. So throughout the document, you will see um comments that are quoted in green, blue, and black. The ones in green is what people love today, uh verbatim from the responses. Uh, blue is what they would like to uh see changed, and the black is what they envision uh for future. These chapters are organized into, these are organized into nine different chapters uh based on the amount of uh discussion uh on each of these topics. Arts, culture, and history, I I I will not go through these, most of these are self-explanatory, but I will talk about alternate perspectives. Um, this is the chapter where this summarizes about six percent of all responses that generally contradicted with the rest. Uh, the main focus of these responses were limiting the role of government. Um, they are in, uh they are summarized in here, but from a comprehensive plan uh perspective, they are definitely well beyond the scope, but we've presented in here uh as an acknowledgement of that voice. So the primary challenges that we do see um in in um achieving this vision through the plan is successfully uniting and integrating its downtown core, established neighborhoods, and future neighborhoods, future developments. We, uh for for our community to definitely break those barriers, we have to do this. We do see this as uh going to be a challenge, um particularly with Veterans Parkway uh almost dividing the community uh from east to west. Um, and enduring economic stability, as we all know moving forward, we um, this is uh going to be a little speculative, but but definitely needs a great economic development strategy, um and that that definitely should become one of the functions of the city moving forward, making sure that we have what we have uh today. Next steps, we will be drafting um a final plan um with the help of fourteen different working groups that are addressing variety of topics that is reflective of what we heard from the community and also the uh addressing the issues and aspects that were pointed out during the existing conditions analysis. Uh, progress updates will be made to the Planning Commission uh on a monthly basis uh between now and June. Uh, we will uh, we'll uh try to bring back the final draft um to Planning Commission in June and subsequently to the City Council in July. With that, I will stop.
Perfect. Questions?
Mayor, I, if I could, I just think, you know, I think we've seen tonight that uh Vasu has demonstrated that because she's been working eighty hours uh a day, a week, you know, that we continue to wear her and her staff out. I I just want to say that as I sit in on some of the steering committees, Vasu and her staff are just doing a tremendous job. I, it is hard to see so much being done in so short a time with so many uh in, you know, engaging meetings that they're having, so I just want to, you know, thank her and her entire crew, as well as city staff and all the public. You know, this is just a tremendous endeavor, uh and I'm very much looking forward to what they come back with in the final plan, because this is such a key document to plan our road ahead, you know, even as we deal with budgetary constraints. So thank you, Vasu, and all your staff for all that you've done up to this point and will continue to do throughout the first half of this year.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hales. As you've pointed out, definitely it's staff, as well as city staff who has helped us throughout this process, and uh public who are actively involved in various working groups, so thank you for that acknowledgement.
Certainly, I think I can speak on behalf of the entire council too, that we're, we want to thank you as well.
Thank you.
But we move from thanks to questions.
Yes.
And I believe we start with uh Alderman Frue.
Thank you, Vasu. Um, I know this is a City of Bloomington Comprehensive Plan.
Yes, sir.
And I'd just like to get your perspective as a planner. Planners like to look out ten or twenty years.
Mm-hmm.
I'm not sure, did you get any comments about regional planning or planning beyond the City of Bloomington? And it makes me think of the recent Panograph article of a couple weeks ago, where the Town of Normal talked about their plan of twenty years ago, and maybe one of the failings of that plan was that not as much got done regionally as they had hoped twenty years ago. So is there any regional planning discussion that's intertwined in this City of Bloomington Comprehensive Plan?
Absolutely. So first of all, um, as while this is Bloomington Comprehensive Plan, we do have a working group on intergovernmental cooperation. So there is some amount of uh regional planning um that will be integrated throughout this process. As we work on various aspects uh with the uh with uh thirteen different working groups, there are aspects that are bubbling to the regional level, whether it's housing issues or whether it is um educational issues, uh some of those have to be addressed at the regional level. So to answer your question in two parts, one, um, some of it is being um addressed as part of the Bloomington Comprehensive Plan, but two, um, I don't think we have a regional plan um as of uh now, but that's something that has been talked about, and uh as we move into the next um um Regional Planning Commission will be uh, will also be uh assisting Town of Normal with their Comprehensive Plan next year. So we are hoping that as an agency working with both the communities, we would, we are hoping to bring some of that um into the process. Thank you.
Alderman Lombe.
Thank you, Vasu. I want to congratulate you as well on a job well done. I think it it took a lot of uh effort on your part, you know, to synthesize all this information. And I I guess I I don't have a question, it's more of a, an additional comment. I I I think I, the general sense that I get about the document is that it's it's positive.
Yes.
And uh i- it talks about uh some of the things that make Bloomington great and some of the things that people like. So I think i- it is um, it is nice to 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 have that sort of contrast, you know, in tough budgetary times, you know, it it's it's good to to take a step back and and really take a look at what it is that we we really like and what makes the uh the city great. And I think um generally, uh you know, whether it's a corporation or a city or uh a a an institution, you know, we uh can get into trouble when they step away from the things that make them great and start to get into other things. So I think that, for me, it provides a nice perspective, and it it's a, it's a good time for reflection, you know, as we go through um, you know, these uh budget times and try to figure out what it is that we we do in the future, so thank you.
Absolutely. And um, thank you for pointing out, I I do want to underscore that uh the comments that we've received have been um for the most part, very positive. It has been extremely refreshing to go through those comments, and after going through eight thousand comments, so maybe ten, fifteen times, I can, um, I can definitely say that um that people generally are extremely happy with what we have here today. And um the the only um complaint is just, you know, make sure that what we have today uh is what we have twenty years from uh now, which um is challenging uh to some respect because we we have our bar set high already.
Alderman, thanks.
But Vasu, and again, let me just say thank you for what is really, really high quality completed staff work here. I mean, this is very good. And I just wanted to to echo or or tag on to something that you just said. I also appreciate the fact that that you've been, you and your team have been intellectually honest enough to talk about some of the alternative perspectives.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and and while I think you know that that proportionally, it's it's a a fairly small group, about six percent, I think, but but at least you have have brought forth um some of those as as you describe them, alternative perspectives, and and folks who who um kind of see a different um vision for the future. But again, my compliments to you, a- again, for being intellectually honest enough to get those, to to listen and 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 hear and get those documented in 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 the current draft of the plan, so thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Other questions of Vasu? Okay, thank you very much, Vasu. I appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
Take care. Now we actually move on to our agenda. We have a consent agenda, and that's listed under item seven. Are there any items that any members of the council would like to remove from the consent agenda? Alderwoman Schmidt, sorry.
I I mean, your peripheral vision here. Um, yes, I'd like to um remove uh G, seven G.
Seven G.
For a conversation about that.
Okay. Seven G. Anything else? Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented with the exception of item seven G?
Remove.
Moved by Alderwoman Painter, is there a second?
Second.
Uh, second by Alderwoman Sterns. Uh, again, as long as they're assuming there's no further discussion, if, oh, I'm sorry, uh Jim.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, as I have, as my regular practice, I'd like to uh mention that with regard to the consent agenda, I have not received any monies or financial benefits from any of the individuals or organizations referenced in these specific agenda items. Thank you.
Okay. If everyone will go ahead and vote. The motion carries nine to zero, no nays to announce, Madam Clerk. Thank you. We move uh right along to Alderwoman Schmidt, you pulled item seven G?
Um, yes, I just wanted to um, I, first of all, I want to hasten to say I am going to make a motion to approve this. I certainly don't think we can um change a contract at what would be almost the twelfth hour here, but I am concerned that we have almost two hundred and seventy thousand dollars that we're paying for personnel in the Government Center where we really don't have any oversight of for overtime, and really with the nature of their work is, I understand that it's custodial, janitorial, maintenance, those kinds of things. Um, but as suggested in the staff comments to my questions, um, if if others on the council have concerns as I do, we can make them known to the Public Building Commission and maybe start a conversation about the expenditure of that money, and um it's a significant amount of money, and I I think at minimum, we need to understand it a little bit better and perhaps have some more oversight of it.
Okay. Um, Mr. Hales, you have one.
Yeah, I'd just like to uh suggest that I think the one entity probably we could more directly go to is the county administrator and his staff. They basically, by contract between the parties, Public Building Commission, the city and the county, have the direct responsibility to maintain the building. Uh, each year, as they begin the budget process, they will submit to us kind of an early um preliminary draft of that budget. Uh, we get a chance to kind of respond. You might recall several years ago, I think we gave even a little bit more detail on that, but certainly, I think right now, um, going forward, uh since another six, seven, eight months, they'll be back in the budget cycle. We can bring up any concerns the council does have, but just once again, because they have direct responsibility there, the city uh on the flip side has direct responsibility for operating, managing the Abraham Lincoln parking garage, so there, we're directly more in control, and then uh, you know, others are kind of part of that same agreement. But we would welcome any suggestions, comments, direction you would like us to see as we continue to have those discussions with the county about these costs for maintenance of the Government Center building.
Uh, do others share my concerns?
I certainly support it.
Okay. I I just, you know, as we're talking about physical fiscal efficiencies, this seemed to be one that was standing out there. Um, okay, thank you, I'd I'd appreciate having that conversation then, and I'll make a motion to approve this as presented to us.
Okay. Is there a second? I think we have further questions or comments.
I'll second.
Second by uh Alderman Black, and then we have, I believe, uh Alderwoman, Alderman Lauer, and Black wanted to make a comment.
Well, I certainly don't want to get into the county's business, but uh I think um many of us here do have those questions, and um they're talking about an expansion of a mental health facility downtown, and I'm wondering, you know, it it appears to me that part of that building at least is is rather vacant at times, and I wonder if there isn't a a better way to manage the physical property. Um, I don't know whether we could use part of it a little bit better, possibly. I'm sure that maybe the county could even use part of that, maybe shift some things out of the uh, out of the jail and and use part of that. I'm not really sure, because I don't, I don't know all the the nuances of that, but it's just an idea. Thanks.
Thank you. Alderman Black.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and and I'm going to go ahead and support this too, but uh perhaps it was Vasu's uh presentation that got me thinking about visioning and and everything, and and, you know, my long term, in twenty years, fifty years from now, I'd love to see a uh new city hall with a light, with the library inside, with adequate space uh for the staff, uh for staff and and for meeting spaces. I I think we can really have an opportunity to to down the road, really consider what that looks like, because I, it it's inefficient that we have these two buildings. I don't think this building inspires uh, you know, uh the the same uh reaction of people from, say, the 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 County Courthouse. Um, you know, as for the fiscal um end of it, I I think that definitely, it's always good to get more oversight, but on my time in the county board with Jack Moody and his staff, they did, they do a wonderful job and and do the best they can to cut uh uh cut costs. So it, I, definitely something I'd be interested in seeing, but I'm comfortable supporting this, and just my long term vision, I would just love to see something like that with uh, you know, more citizens involved and 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 a a room that can accommodate more and not just fold-out chairs, and just, I think it'd be great.
Ju- just FYI, when when we have prospective businesses that are thinking of coming to Bloomington Normal, we never meet in my office. We meet in Kousa's office. Of course, his his is probably the best, other than maybe Ed Russ in all of uh, you know, Bloomington, or Bloomington Normal. Anyway, uh, let's uh go ahead, if there are any other comments, go ahead and vote. Okay, uh, the motion carries nine to zero, there are no nays to announce, Madam Clerk. And we move uh right along to our regular agenda, excuse me, agenda, there's uh eight A, is the Tucci recapture agreement? And is there a, um, before we begin the discussion?
Mayor, uh, just want to make you aware, there is a, the agenda addendum that was removed, so no action on that is needed tonight.
I'm sorry. Yes, okay. Um, and what about eight B?
Yes.
Text amendment to chapter two, et cetera, is there a motion to uh support that? And for purposes of discussion, please.
I'll make a motion, we approve as presented.
Okay. Moved by Alderman Black, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Sage. Okay. Uh, discussion on the text amendment to chapter two? Um, Mr. Hales, if you want to go ahead and make some comments?
Mayor, just briefly, uh, the ordinance you have before you is is very closely identical to a previous one, only with some cosmetic changes. There hasn't been any substantive change since you uh saw this back on December eighth in a work session, as we have included there again, the PowerPoint presentation. Uh, we certainly have Patty Lynn Silva, Finance Director, Jeff Jergens, Corporate Counsel, and others who have been involved in this, would be happy to answer any questions. Uh, the council may have on this very important uh and very significant update to the city's procurement rules and regulations.
Questions of Mr. Hales on this? Alderman Black.
I just wanted to point out, thank you, Mr. Mayor, um, that I took one call about this, this topic, and uh the resident was concerned about uh giving more authority to the city manager for spending, and uh, you know, my response was that this is kind of, as per our presentation, more um in line with uh kind of our ordinances where we want to be percent wise, um, and, you know, and the the conversation turned to matters of trust, can we trust our our city uh staff to to use funds appropriately? And and I think that if if we as a council have uh questions about that, perhaps we should consider new city staff, um, and and I'm comfortable putting my confidence in in David Hales in these these sorts of decisions. Um, but you know, it kind of goes goes to the the larger conversation of, um, you know, the way that that our government is structured uh with with the aldermanic system here. Um, you know, aldermen are are policymakers, and you have staff that are are kind of, do what we tell them, where the brains, there are the fingers. Um, and if if the residents want to see aldermen really in into the details of the of running the everyday um type aspect of of city government, we may need to have a a larger conversation about what that might look like. But uh, as of right now, I I think that this is the best way to go about uh giving our our staff the ability to be flexible and 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 uh the ability to get things done, and I'm comfortable putting my trust in David Hales in this one. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments, questions? All right, if everyone will go ahead and vote. Oh, I'm so sorry.
Yeah, that's all right.
I'm I'm missing several people today.
Um, yeah, I've got. Um, yeah, I've got, I've got some problems with this on, on a couple of different levels. I certainly, I've had a conversation with Brett Lucian, the Water Department, and I, I spoke briefly to, uh, Chief Moore, the Fire Department. Those are the, two of the bigger, uh, or larger, more expensive departments. Um, I don't think that we should be giving, uh, uh, the amounts, I don't think we should be changing the amounts. I agree, uh, with both of them, that, um, certainly there's, um, probably a better way to, um, handle, uh, uh, the day-to-day operations, but, um, in terms of oversight, I, I really think the council deserves, uh, the ability to continue to look at these projects financially, um, in the current, uh, in the current form, uh, so I'm not comfortable with, with, uh, changing the amounts.
Okay. Just Alderwoman Sterns?
Yeah, I, I don't believe this is an issue of trust. I mean, after all, if we're, if we're going to trust, why not just make the limit a hundred thousand, or why not just make it, you know, why not, why not? Because we trust, so there's no question, and everything's fine. Um, to me, $25,000 is a lot of money, um, and we have this, we've had this conversation for the eight years I've been on council. Well, it's only, you know, 25,000. It's only 50. It's only 100. It's only, only, only. Um, you know, I think our citizens are asked, to me, what I'm hearing is more accountability, not less. I get calls about, uh, change orders, great concerns about change orders for far less than $50,000. Concerns about, um, uh, no bids, lots of concerns about that. And to me, this is just giving council the ability to know. This is, this is giving us a chance to look at it, a chance to think about it. Ninety-nine percent of the time, probably, it's not going to be questioned, or, or it's not going to come up. It's gonna seem, yeah, that, that seems right. But why not at least, as Kevin said, you know, look at it? Why not think about it? Why not know about it? Um, to me, what I heard, and I, and I will say this, 'cause I do think it applies, what I heard at Citizen Summit over and over and over was, look at the small things, look at the details, tweak things, fix things, do something different, um, so that we, the citizens, don't have to pay more taxes or fees. I heard that, I heard that all evening long. I don't think I ever heard one time increase pretty much anything, but do restructure, do re, you know, realign, do think, do, do analyze, do be the watchdog. So, I'm, I'm not comfortable going to 50,000. Um, of course, I respect the rest of the council and their, and their viewpoint on this, and I appreciate, Mayor.
Would you have a substitute motion, or is there a specific thing that you'd wanna, with different...
Well, I mean, I, I can make the motion that we limit, continue to limit at 25,000. You know, continue that the, the city manager hereby authorized procure, so on and so forth, uh, projects costing not more than 50,000. I could, I can make the motion that we change that to e- maybe even 30,000 or something, just to, you know, bump it up a little bit.
I'm just, I'm just saying, are you gonna, if you wanna make that motion?
And I, okay, I'll, I'll make, I'll make the motion.
Okay, so there's a, you're making a substitute motion, that this be cha- approval of this, but change the amount from 50 to 30?
I'm, I'm making that motion.
Or, or, well, we can, would you, um, okay, we would need to go to the maker and the seconder?
She's offering an alternative motion at different numbers, right?
That's what you said.
Alternative, right. It's not a substitute, substitute motion. Right, okay.
She's making a motion, she's...
Okay, y- is there a second?
Yes, also.
Okay. A second by Alderman Lauer.
To be clear, what are the numbers that you're looking for on D?
Well, I'd, I'd like to, personally, I, I'm sorry, I, I don't mean to be out of line here, but I would like to go back to the, the previous 10,000 and 25,000 dollars.
Well, well, you've, you seconded a motion that was 30,000, no, okay. So, that's the one we're gonna go ahead and go with.
Okay.
So, we have that. Um, is there any discussion on this? 'Cause we'll need to vote on the alternative motion. So, the alternative motion would be, actually, I need to clear this, 'cause a couple of people started to vote, I'm sorry. Um, this would be on the alternative motion, which would support this, but change the limit from 50 to 30.
Right.
Okay? And if everyone will go ahead and, um, vote on that. Jeff, did you have a concern about this? I'm sorry.
No, we're, we're waiting for the last.
Okay, okay. Okay, the, um, motion fails, uh, two to seven. Madam Clerk, would you announce the nays?
Alderman Sage. Alderman Miller-Wanway. Alderman Painter. Alderman Schmidt. Alderman Black. Alderman Hallman. Alderman Frueen.
Okay. Okay, now we, I'm sorry. Now, we go back to the main motion, if everyone would then vote on the main motion, and this would be, we'd include the 50, not the 30. The, uh, motion carries. Madam Clerk, would you announce that there are nays? It was seven to two.
Alderman Lauer. Alderman Sterns.
Okay. Thank you very much. All right. Motion carries, and we move on to, uh, city managers' discussion?
Good evening. Good evening.
Okay, thank you. Good evening.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, just, uh, a, a couple of quick notes. Um, did want to, uh, make you aware that we are beginning work at a staff level on the sanitary sewer storm water rate study. Uh, I do believe it might be, uh, very beneficial, uh, Mayor, for you and the council, consider possibly, um, uh, appointing a stakeholder advisory committee as we go through this particular study. This is, uh, very common to have stakeholders at the table as we look at, uh, rates, uh, for, for sanitary sewer and storm water. Um, I think that could be a great benefit to you, to have some people get into some detail in this process. We're not quite ready for them, but, you know, here in a month or two, we will. So, just something to be thinking about. Again, it's, uh, nothing that... Uh, did want to mention that on the Tucci recapture agreement that we pulled tonight, uh, appreciate Alderman Painter's, uh, help on that. Do want you to be aware that we do believe that, uh, only a policy and an ordinance incorporating that policy might be very beneficial going forward. We do have, we're not sure to, to what extent, areas in the city where property has not been benefited by having sanitary sewer lines, water lines, out in front of them. So, basically, uh, they haven't had the benefit of a developer putting in these facilities. However, because of, uh, the, I think, a strong position that you advocate for infill development, having some policies and procedures on how the, these, uh, these properties that lack utilities close by, can have someone take the lead, but have opportunities for reimbursement, recapturing, uh, some of those costs would be a great benefit to continue to incentivize and promote infill development. So, that's the bigger issue. This is one particular project. We are working on some ideas for a possible policy, and we'll bring in those to you in the near future. Two other things, just, uh, in connection with some of the recent, uh, events, not only with Martin Luther King's holiday, but, uh, recently, I had a chance to sit in on some of the police diversity training. I've asked our HR director to prepare some ideas, some plans, for some city staff-wide diversity training. Um, in the six years I've been here, we haven't had anything of that nature. We had some great presenters, uh, and this was almost at no cost, or very little cost. We've got some great people in the, uh, community that are willing. I think the Police Department, under, uh, Chief Hefner and the Assistant Chief's leadership, it was great to see them planning for this, uh, but I think our entire city organization, even the council, if you'd like to join us for that, would be well served. I am working on some, um, uh, action plans, uh, to bring to you, as, as we talk about goals and objectives, but in the city staff meeting today, we did talk about one that I think is imperative, that, uh, ultimately, the council weigh in and support as well, and that is a, a strong goal of trying to, uh, increase workplace diversity. Uh, these are talked about, uh, you've heard a lot of things, you know, recently, even from police and firefighters. Uh, I think unfortunately, it is very difficult sometimes. Uh, uh, we've really gotta think more creative, creatively innovative, think outside the box, but, uh, under our HR directors, Nicole Albertson's, we'll be bringing back to you both a goal, as well as some very specific action plan ideas going forward. I think the time has come that we really, with your leadership and support, make a much greater effort trying to increase, once again, our, our diversity within the city staff organization. Um, and, uh, last, I just wanna say that, uh, it is very, uh, I think, exciting to see some of the interest being shown, uh, throughout the community. You might, uh, recall even in the Colonial Plaza with K, Kmart, uh, moving out, we're beginning to see parties that have an interest, just like with Lakewood Plaza. One thing that kept that particular property vacant for so long is Walmart continued to pay the lease payments, you know, and, and the payments. When that came to a conclusion, then, uh, new owners came on board, uh, with exiting of Kmart, even though it's sad and unfortunate to see that. It, it's almost as if there's much stronger now, uh, interest, uh, you know, in that whole Colonial Plaza. I think, uh, many people see that as strategically located across from, uh, the malls, so, again, we can't get into any specifics, but both there and elsewhere around the city, we continue to see this resurgence of retailers having an interest to locate in the Bloomington Normal area. And last, uh, I do wanna indicate that in our next meeting in two weeks, we'll be bringing before you Brian Moore, who's been named the new fire chief, and Brian, if you would please stand, I know some of the council members may have seen him. Brian Moore has recently been serving as Assistant Chief. Um, I will kinda get a little bit more into his background, but to accommodate, uh, his family and others who would like to come and watch that swearing-in ceremony, Brian is, is our newest, uh, fire chief, and, um, we appreciate his willingness to take on this new assignment. And I'll just share with you later, uh, by email, we continue to make, uh, great progress on trying to, uh, uh, fill these remaining positions, so we'll give you more specifics on that in the, the weeks ahead. So, we continue to be very active in that, and, and I just wanna thank you as a council for your support and, and attending the Citizen Summit. Uh, I think that's the second one we've had in, in six years. A lot of great input. In fact, I think this was even more, uh, uh, citizens were more engaged in this event than they even were five years ago, as we were talking about a strategic plan. Uh, but hopefully, you've seen that we've got the results of the Citizen, uh, Summit, as well as the online budget survey results out online. And then last, but not least, just wanna thank Brendan Hefner. He participated in that Breaking Barriers, Building Relationship, Community Forum, very well-attended, you know, well over a hundred people. But moderator did a terrific job. They got through more of the questions and answers than I thought they would, but not in our town, and the other sponsoring agencies are gonna have more venues like that, but I think that was just a terrific gathering and a chance for people to really ask some, some questions of all the law enforcement heads, as well as our state's attorney, Jason Chambers. So, that was just a great event. Just wanted to share some of those quick thoughts with you, so thank you.
Thank you. And also, start up, uh, thank you, uh, Chief Hefner. Um, I did have many people tell me they thought you did, uh, a great job, and I appreciate you doing that. And then, Brian, welcome aboard, and there's, I'm sure you're gonna do all kind of great things like your predecessor, but there's one thing you don't have to do: buy me more glasses. Okay. Thank you. And I wanna thank Alderwoman Karen Schmidt as Mayor Pro Tem for, um, uh, shepherding us through the, the Citizen Summit when I was at the U.S. Conference of Mayors, and Alderman Scott Black for handling the mayoral open house on Friday. Thank you all so much. And there are a couple of things at the, uh, this was, I'm not gonna bore you, there's a really long, uh, program here from the U.S. Conference of Mayors, this was Tuesday through Friday, and it was, frankly, if it wasn't the best conference, it's tied with the second-best conference I've ever attended in my entire life, uh, and, and in a lot of different ways. We had great access, not just to, obviously, other mayors, there's, this is 362 metro mayors, 250 or so were there, and it, uh, wasn't just sort of the networking and creative problem-solving and interaction, but we, um, got to interact with lots of people, of course, in Washington, and, and people who deal with problem-solving in certain areas, including actually the cabinet secretaries, and there were a few. I wanna, three of the four we met with, um, were just really outstanding. Anthony Fox is Secretary of Transportation, also a former mayor of Charlotte, North Carolina, and Julian Castro, also a former mayor of San Antonio, and then, um, Robert Perez, not a former mayor, but he's Secretary of Labor. And then we also met with, uh, the Agriculture Director, Tom Filzak, who most people know as a governor, but he was actually a mayor of a small town before he was state senator, before he was governor. Anyway, they, they clearly were, uh, uh, very impressive with the amount of time that they would give us. They came, all four of them came to at least one of the panels. We were two blocks from the White House, and then we spent six hours in the White House, and they came back to the panels in, in the White House. And we, uh, we did manage to get lots of great access. The head of Government Relations made sure that we had whatever we need. If we have problems and clog bureaucratic arteries, or we wanna have more opportunities for grants, uh, Austin, I'm gonna be keeping you busy, dude. So, I got a lot of great ideas for how we're gonna keep, you know, moving forward, but, um, and we did have, uh, the opportunity to, uh, there were many members of Congress came on from both sides of the aisle, and we also then, of course, in our six hours in the White House, we did get to spend about 50 minutes with the President, and, um, he certainly got an earful from a lot of concerns that, that mayors had. And one of the questions that ma- that the mayors had was Marketplace Fairness Act, which actually the people on the Hill, Republicans and Democrats, they have a chance. What is the Marketplace Fairness Act? Essentially, it means that companies like Amazon and eBay, um, would have to pay the sales tax if you order, right? So, some of the people, one of the reasons why we've got problems in malls, Eastland Mall and other areas, is a lot of our local retailers, you know, they do have to collect the tax. Amazon and others don't. Turns out now, there's a possibility of it passing, uh, because there's always been bipartisan support, but Amazon, which had been against it, now is so inundated by the 50 states having different rules and regulations, they, they, we just want one set of rules. So, Amazon is now supporting it, and so there's at least some possibility. That would have an important fiscal impact on us, you know, i- if, if that, if it passes, and we should know, actually, by, we won't know before our budget, but we will know a month or two after our budget whether or not that passes. And if it doesn't pass, um, we have even more, uh, severe budget issues as we go forward. Uh, if it does pass, it may very well mean that our, uh, revenue stream will not, or, which is mainly sales tax, is not gonna continue to, to slowly decline, whereas obviously our costs are going off at roughly 2%. So, those are some of the issues that certainly, uh, mayors talked about. There were all kinds of, uh, emphasis, the mayors are really talking about the same stuff that, that we all deal with on a daily basis, and infrastructure, uh, crime, and actually, uh, not only just crime, but crime and police minority relationships. There were several panels on that. I sat next to the mayor of St. Louis, actually, when Joe Biden came in, and we, mainly, he was blithering on, so we, we mainly talked about real, uh, you know, stuff, and, and particularly the reaction that he had, uh, to the event of Ferguson, a, a city right near him. And I talked about our situation and what, you know, we did, we generally thought we had good relationships, and then we have one, which didn't involve anybody being hurt, but it does hurt trust, and what do we do as we, you know, move forward? So, those are definitely things. There is a national presidential panel that was in, uh, that Obama put together, and he even mentioned it, talked about it. Uh, and there's Sean Smoot, who is, uh, a, one of the people who was involved with, uh, the Illinois Police Benevolent Association, one of their head, uh, legislative lobbyists who's on that committee, so we've got, uh, an Illinoisan, uh, on that as well, and that will come out March 2nd. There'll be a range of recommendations. They gave us, as mayors, a kind of a, a dry run of some of the, the recommendations that will be coming forward, and there, this is not pie-in-the-sky stuff, so they're, I'm, I'm really looking forward to, um, to that and moving forward. One of the other things that mayors are talking about, several forums, at-risk youth and at-risk youth summer jobs programs. Um, and I do have, uh, some success, you know, on that, in getting some private funding Now I do have some success, you know, on that, in getting some private funding for us, and I, just because the nature of it, I just found out a confirmation for sure today. You know, we were hoping to get maybe some other private matches, because, but that is a critical situation, when people who are 13, 14, 15, 16, 17 years old have a lot of time on their hands in the summer, what happens? And do they continue to be marginalized in society, or do they get jobs? You know, I was a kid, I was, they had youth summer job programs, this is back in the 70s. So for two years I worked for a library, and two years I worked for Parks and Rec, one year I worked for a hospital. And so you learn, you show up every day, you learn the norms of what it is to have, to behave in a professional work environment, and you learn, hey, it's a pretty damn good idea to have a paycheck, this thing helps every couple of weeks. And so for many reasons, this seems to be one of the main means by which mayors throughout the country are promoting this. And we don't have money in our budget per se, but it looks like I'll be able to leverage some money to at least do a little bit for our community in this summer perhaps. So anyway, those are some of the things, I'm happy to talk about these. In fact, I probably will come to the next mayor's open house, and I'm sure unless there's something really hot on the agenda, I'll at least go off for a while on some of the things we've talked about. So, oh yes, Ovation 11 is opening, and that is the former Palace Theater, and they will be opening with a new business model, they will be opening a soft opening next week. The council will be, will receive invitations if you haven't already. And essentially, they are going down from 1,800 seats at the Palace Theater to about 600, but you're going to be able to go in, you can walk in and sit at a sports bar, small sports bar, and not even see a movie, or you can go in and you can basically have a menu that's not dissimilar from Friday's and have alcoholic beverages. But they will be served in separate color containers, they have all kinds of things that they assured us that we put into place, and it's really an exciting new business model. They spent almost $7 million. You want to come spend $7 million in my city? I love you, baby. Okay. So anyway, just to let you know that that's coming up, and to let the council know if you haven't already, I would hope to see all of you there. I've gone on too long and it's late, so I will shut up. Council comments. Alderman Fruen.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a few things, I'd like to keep them short. Couple of quick reactions to begin with. I appreciated David's balance as we talk about some of the retail establishments leaving the community or closing their doors. It's nice to see the balance of the optimism and the interest in some of the stores. So I know that's a delicate balance as to what can be explained to the council, what can't be, but I guess I would encourage you to be as forthcoming with us as you can, because we are getting questions and we're hearing comments in the community, and people are asking us, and sometimes people have information that, that maybe the city staff doesn't know. So I would encourage David to keep our, keep us informed. The other reaction I have to something is the, the public comment. And Mayor, I think it's good of you on some of these situations where we don't have that dialogue, to tell somebody, if they want to stick around, they can speak to a department head or to yourself, and I think we have that opportunity tonight. And just to keep in mind that as a council of nine members, quite often, some of us have already dealt with a person, so we might have some knowledge that might help the situation too. So I appreciate your willingness to talk to those people.
And maybe that's something I should also mention, if people actually have an issue, I think what we've seen lately is, is it's, there have not been tangible issues, they've tended to be people who are posturing publicly. But absolutely, if you have a specific issue, and I'll try to remember to say, or stick around for the council. So if people want to solve a problem, rather than just make a public statement, then that's absolutely important. And I would absolutely continue to encourage people though to come to the mayoral open house, because actually, you know, there was a time where our previous acting city manager was at, was staff in the open house, and we had four or five people have issues, and she handled them all before they left, right, with her laptop. So if you want to get problems solved, you want to talk to other residents, right, that's, I think, I find the most satisfying form of citizen engagement that I've had, is since being mayor.
Thank you. And that's a good segue into, I'll just make a brief comment and a suggestion that with public comment, I'm all for it. I think it's a great thing to have, I think it is part of our fabric today. I'm not running for reelection this spring, some of the council are, but what I'm concerned about is the openness of open comment. And we can talk about different parts of the public comment, but I guess two of my biggest concerns are that public comment is not used for commercial purposes, and I'm also concerned that it's not used for campaign purposes. I think that's unfair to anybody on the council that might be running for election. So I don't know what you may or may not decide to do with public comment, but I think we have to look at other communities, town of Normal, McLean County, that have the same rules, state rules, and how they might handle it differently, and that's, that's your prerogative as mayor. So I encourage you to think about what we allow and don't allow.
Trust me, I have, but the reality is, is we are the most, one of the most open, but if that's the worst thing that people say about us, you know, it's, democracy's messy. But I know, I've talked to Jeff Jurgens a little bit about it, particularly the commercial stuff. And in talking to other mayors, it is, they absolutely prohibit people who are running for council, right, from speaking, okay? But we don't have any such prohibitions, and that, the trade-off is, you begin to limit public comment, then it begins a little, it's a little harder than, for me even, to talk about and brag about transparency. I think we take, I'll continue to say to people who may want to come up and just beat the crap out of us, frankly, is to say, you want to get something solved, come in and talk to us. If you want to just pontificate and, you know, posture, then I suppose this is the form for posturing. So I'll continue to do that, but I wasn't, it's not my intention to limit anybody. I mean, obviously the council can, can choose to do that instead of me, but.
Let me flip the coin a little bit and compliment you on the State of the City address. Had a lot of balance of successes and some challenges. And we all know up here that lots of times we're dealing with the negative and what's wrong, and we're going to head into a period, next two months, of the negative and what's wrong. And I think to the extent that we can talk about successes, sometimes we don't like to pat ourselves on the back, but we need to do more of that, and keep things as positive as we can. Some things are hard to shake. Everybody likes to talk about the past. Everybody likes to talk about different things prior city councils or we have done. But if we're going to succeed and go forward, we got to be talking about the future, not the past. I do want to get a level set on the issue of conflict of interest. The issue was raised a couple of months ago about conflict of interest, and I think we just need to get a level set about what did we do at that time to follow through with that inquiry, that concern? What did we do as a city to address that concern?
Okay. Well, I can, I talked to Jason Chambers, in fact, after you and I spoke, and he said that I had the authority as mayor to make a request to the Attorney General's Office to decide whether or not there has been a conflict of interest. It turns out, Jason was mistaken, he actually called to let me know, I think it was the following Monday, and the Attorney General's Office wouldn't issue an opinion. Is that correct? Jeff, you know, you've kind of followed this, am I, is I, am I missing a step here? I forgot.
No, that's right. They've reached out for, I believe, an advisory opinion, but I think that was probably mooted. I have not heard anything more since the council took the action to basically rescind that.
My guess is, if this is correct, my impression was, we shouldn't hold our breath for any opinion from the Attorney General's Office. They were kind of surly about it to begin with, they didn't really want to give us an opinion, not even an advisory opinion.
That's right, and I think, you know, I don't want to speak out of turn here, I can have a follow-up conversation with the state's attorney's office.
If you could, and then we, get back to the council, because I think that's, you know, an important question. Thank you, Jim.
So it's both a personal situation for me, since I was the one that was the, in question, but also on a bigger scale, you know, we're going to have conflict of interest issues, questions on a regular basis, and we've pretty much avoided those in the past. So it's obviously heightened my awareness, and I think it's going to become more commonplace in our discussions. I'm not out to be vindictive of anybody or any issue, but I think there's going to have to be a better awareness as a council of conflict of interest, and I don't know as a council that we have done anything to further our understanding of what is and what isn't, and I think we all have some of that gray area we need to address.
Okay. How about, so we can move along with this, let's, let's be sure that, we'll put this on a, this very topic, on a future, you know, we have an ordinance, but maybe continue discussion at a, at a committee of the whole at some point. 18.1, okay. So, but we'll, if that's okay with you, okay? And then we, because I don't want, you're, you're raising a good point, but let's have that for a future discussion.
That's fine, I appreciate that, and I'll close with the fact that, you know, this has been pending for a couple of months, and it seemed to be the primary story for the first month in the local newspaper, and then all of a sudden it drops off, and the community is saying, is he guilty, or what's the deal? What's going on? So we need to bring some closure to it or some discussion.
Right, no, I understand, I understand the point.
We're just hanging it out there.
Right, thank you. And we will try to do that, Jim. Yeah. Diana?
Thank you. I just want to make several comments about the Citizen Summit. First of all, thanks to the, to the staff and to Alderman Sage and Alderman Schmidt for coordinating it. I had eight people from Ward 8, two people were sick that night. Anyway, I heard very positive comments for the most part from the folks that attended, and at the table I was at, there seemed to be good give and take during the discussion, there are differences of opinion, however people respected each other, and we came to some, some agreements. I'd like to, sorry Nora, I'd like to see these more often.
I bet you're not on her Christmas card list.
Yeah, I just, yeah, I just, I just lost that, that spot on various topics, maybe, you know, twice a year, just to, to get more input from, from citizens.
Thank you. Alderman Black.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I'll be brief. I just want to give a quick shout out. Tomorrow, we're having our ward meeting with Alderman Sage and Schmidt, and myself will be at Miller Park Pavilion from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM. So the Citizen Summit was, was excellent, this will be a little bit less formal, more kind of chatting, just kind of getting some feedback. We'll be giving a quick presentation on where we're at, and going to be just hearing some people's thoughts. When we did this a year ago, we thought it was very productive, I had an excellent time getting some good feedback, and so I invite everybody to come and share their thoughts.
Thank you. Alderman Sterns and then Milli Wambway.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to talk, I actually kind of planned to talk about not in our town. I, I have not signed the pledge. I understand most of the council, some of it certainly has, and I have very specific reasons for that. The pledge, I asked for a copy of it, I didn't get it, but I got it some other way, and it starts out something along the lines, correct me if I'm wrong, I share the not in our town commitment to stop hate, address bullying, and build an inclusive community. First and foremost, I don't think there's a city in, on the planet that would say, you know, we tolerate hate here. So the negativity, that hate is kind of okay. Hate is never okay. It's not a given. It's not a given that there's racism somewhere else. I use racism, it could be many things. So it's not in our town. It has a little bit of a superiority aspect to it. But how do I, how do I, and I hope everyone can kind of respect, I realize you may not disagree, and I totally respect that. How do I stop hate? How do I do that? Wow. I'm going to comment later on what happened here in Bloomington, but I don't believe, I really, I don't know that I can change someone's heart. I don't know that I can change their intentions. I don't know that anyone can. I think maybe God can, I think maybe love can, I think maybe as parents, as, you know, siblings, as family, we can create. I don't know that I can stop hate. But, you know, if someone else can and they want to sign a pledge, I thoroughly respect that. I asked the word if it was window dressing. It was a question. Is, is this window dressing? I don't know, but I do know this, a comment was made by a, you know, police officer, and we all know this, it was on the radio all day long, that seemed to apparently wish someone dead, and that someone happened to be a person of another, of another race. To me, this went so far beyond inappropriate. It went so far beyond the comment that, well, this was very inappropriate where it was said, it went to the level of unthinkable to me, unthinkable. And yet, where did, where did council, now, anyone can make a comment, and I, you know, I'm very guilty of many, many things. Hopefully not hate, but anyway. Hopefully not a comment that I would ever wish anyone dead, that's considered like a very serious, very, very, very evil thing in my chain of, you know, ethics. But anyway, the comment was made, and it was declared inappropriate, declared that it shouldn't have been made where it was made, as if, well, you know, it shouldn't have been made where it was made, it shouldn't have ever been, come to a tape recorder. To me, that had nothing to do with it. It was the evil, the intent, and if you want to use the word hatred, I don't, I can't judge another person but to me, the way it sounded, the way it came across. Now this comment, how did it come to council? How did it come to light? Well, some have said it didn't have to come to light at all, and that may well be, maybe it, maybe it didn't, but it did come to light. And how did it come to council? It came to council on the radio. It came to council in the newspaper. It didn't come because someone inside the city thought, wow, this is so reprehensible that we need to make it known to the city at least, or to the mayor, or to the city council, so that if this is out there, we can do a lot more than write a letter and put it in someone's file. We can do a lot more than condemn it, which is all very nice. But what happened a year and a half ago when it happened? That was my question on the radio, and I'm not responding to anyone, I'm, I'm talking because I plan to talk. My comment was, how on earth was this said? Was this known? And did nobody even find out about it for a year and a half? Wow. And then they found out in the newspaper. They found out because there was a trial. That's how they found out. And how, how did it even come to light that this wouldn't come out in the trial? You know, that this would come to the public for? And what would the public think? Well, what could the public think? How does that serve the city? How does that serve the police department? How does that serve anyone? And was I angry when I heard it? Much more so than signing a pledge, much more so. And I'm going to continue for a minute. Alderman Fruen, I appreciate your rather lengthy comments, and mine may be a little bit lengthy too.
I'd like to ask you to wrap it up, because I do want to just make a couple of comments relative to what you've just said, so we do need to wrap this up. Okay. I'm giving you another minute or so.
Well, it'll take more than a minute, Mayor. This is important.
What is it that you are talking about?
Okay, well, I want to talk about not in our town and what it actually says. It says that intolerant words should not go unchallenged. It says that silently tolerating is, is wrong, and I think most of us agree with that. But it's not just about racism, it's about other protected classes, if you will. It's about, it's about, it's about.
I think nobody would disagree with this.
Okay, you haven't disagreed yet.
Right.
But is it about the mentally ill? Is it about people on their meds? Is it? Because there were comments in the newspaper that were insulting, that were pejorative, that were wrong. And was it once? No, it was a pattern. Those comments were repeated in an email. So who's got the courage? I didn't sign the pledge, I didn't sign the pledge, but others did, that this would not be tolerated. Who's on meds? Are some of our soldiers coming back with PTSD are on meds? Some of our family members have mental illness and are on meds? Should that be a term that's okay to put in the newspaper as a way to insult someone or suggest that they are less than? I don't think it should. And I think a public apology, I think intoler, we should not tolerate that.
Actually, Alderman Sterns, if you had known, I did say that it was an unfortunate use of words, so you're talking about something also a year in some in advance.
It's been used.
So, yeah, so, okay, it, it didn't, essentially, an ally of you who makes up lies all the time really pissed me off. So, yes, I should have done that.
And you actually, so you're sitting here as the mayor and making a direct insult.
No.
Someone who makes up lies all the time. Is that, is that appropriate though?
Oh, that's, that's an empirical assessment.
I think it's inappropriate.
All of us terms, I know you want to respond, we get, we get beat up all the time by your pals. You get a little flesh wound and you're.
That's completely unfair, Mayor Renner, and I've gotten beaten up and bullied by you, and this council tolerated it quite nicely. So why don't we just leave it at that?
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman, Milli Wambway.
Okay. Thank you. I'm scared to say anything. Okay, well, I mean, all I, I wanted to say, I wanted to, to say that I, I attended the, the community dialogue on Thursday, the 22nd, so I, I want to thank those who took the effort, and it showed actually incredible foresight, you know, in light of, you know, many of the events that were going on nationally, I don't think any of us knew that this would happen. So I want to thank Alderman Schmidt, you know, for her participation and taking the lead with that, and the many other organizations that helped to put it together. And I also wanted to thank Chief Hefner. I thought he did a fantastic job, you know, one of the things that I appreciated about him, I know initially when he was interviewed for, for the position, was that he, he's pretty straight, to the point, and yet, you know, he, he does bring something to the city that I think will be invaluable, his, his knowledge of police work, but at the same time also his knowledge of, of the community. What I also thought was, was very interesting, and, and made me feel good, is how I felt that the, the community just kind of came together, in my opinion, while people expressed some serious concerns that they had about their relationship with, with police, but I. but I, I was very proud to see that people decided to do it in a way that was respectful and, and really will help us move forward as, as a community. So I'm looking forward to the, the future dialogues that will come out of this, and I, I think this is something that we should all be very proud of, because many other communities, as you've seen, have decided to, to, to take it in a different direction, and then sometimes in a, in a very unproductive direction, and I, and I think we have something much better here in Bloomington, and it makes me proud to be here. Thank you.
And just on that note, and since we were distracted earlier with Alderman Sterns, I just, the point that you initially made, I wanted to make clear that there is a legitimate policy question, right? I mean, the council found out, and I found out, I think, the day after David Hales found out, and we would never have known if there wasn't a trial, right? We would have never known. So that... Well, that, that's a good question. Where does that happen? How would that happen? Do we want to know every time Georgia, or Tom, or anybody reprimands anybody in the city of Bloomington? Well, the answer to that question, I'm sure, is no. We've got 650 employees. So then, when would you notify somebody, right? So that is, that's a policy question, and if we, you've had enough, I'm answering, I'm just clarifying, you've had your time.
It was me talking.
So, oh, I'm sorry.
May I, please?
Just to clarify, if there's a suspect class, and that's, that's, you know, we don't have to worry about it, a suspect class, the Supreme Court defines that, that's something we could conclude in our ordinance. So, you know, certainly, I've, I've mentioned this to Mr. Hales, Mr. Juergens, and so we will be coming forth to the council with a discussion on that, because we should not, right? We should not have a situation where we're surprised like that, the city manager or us, if something like that happened. Now, that police chief is, acting police chief is no longer here, so there's no possibility of going back, we should have known under those circumstances. So what is, what does the ordinance look like so that we're not notified every time somebody has, is, is reprimanded? But if something is serious, it involves something like, we have to define serious, then we need to go. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Right, and, and what I saw in, in, in that dialogue is, is something that I've always ascribed to, is that when, when there is an issue, there is actually an opportunity to do something and to, to get better. So to me, I, I see that it's a wonderful option, and I, to me, it was very important for me to see that people collectively actually decided to do that, without necessarily talking to one another, you know? It's just a community collectively said, you know, "Yes, there is an opportunity here to do something special and to do something better." You know, so no finger pointing, it's not going to help us achieve anything, let's just move forward, recognize what the issues are. We can't go back in the past and talk about what happened, who did what, and why they didn't do it. It's over, it's done, so it's important to move forward. Thank you.
Thanks. Alderman Lauer, thanks.
Yeah, I just want to compliment everybody involved in the open dialogue here. I don't want to criticize anyone. I, I very much enjoyed, and, and I think it's a long time coming. Alderman Schmidt, thank you so much for your involvement, and everyone else that was there on Thursday night. I think it is a, a healing process, and it's, it's something that sets Bloomington at times, and maybe I am being a little arrogant, but I expect more, and I think our citizens expect more out of ourselves, because we are better, and we can be, and we will be. And so I'm very, very enthused by that. I think it's an important conversation that we need to continue to, to have. I am also very pleased with the Citizen Summit. It was the first time I was actively engaged with that many other aldermen and their constituents all at the same time. That was, it was very good, and, and so I hope to do that more often. As a matter of fact, on a week from Tuesday night, I'm having my own Aldermanic open house at the Lafayette Club at 6:30 till 8:30, and that is for Ward 1 constituents.
What date is that again?
That's Tuesday, the 3rd, from 6:30 till 8:30 at the Lafayette Club.
Okay, thank you.
And that's for Ward 1. Thank you.
All right. Redirect very quickly, because I've been...
So, real quickly, will that be a public meeting that the rest of us contend?
Yeah.
Okay. And Mayor, I had this whole laundry list of things to talk about, and I left off the most important one.
Okay, 30 seconds.